Okay, let's call the meeting over if we could please. First order of minutes would be the minutes, minutes from the March 19th meeting. Everybody had an opportunity to read those minutes, review any corrections or changes. Otherwise entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Motion from Eric to approve the minutes, is there a second? Second by Gary. Further discussion, all approve, say aye. Disapprove? Motion will carry. Next would be your bills list, additional bills list. Understand there's some discussions on a hold of Conway heating bills until we get a further explanation. You've noticed on the Schnell contractor, that's the tuck pointing company. Brad's approved their final draw, right Brad?
Final draw.
For the brick, that is correct.
For the brickwork.
There's another one in there, Dean, I'm going to jump ahead of you for the roof. That's everything but $2,000 in the roof.
So we got them all paid up except for two grand.
How about Bill Brown?
Bill Brown, we're holding five. Basically the only thing Bill needs to do, we're kind of waiting for that front just to make sure we get some good rains, make sure everything's tight. And the bill needs to come like with a wood trim on the inside of those, what is that front?
When you say it's a front, is that?
Brad has had a little drywall, he can just touch above Carol's office. So those are the two things Bill needs to do, hold five for him, just.
Five thousand.
Five thousand. And hold two thousand for the purchase.
But the whole building, as far as the roof and the tuck pointing, we only owe two grand?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Remains.
Remains, yes. Any other questions on the bills? I noted, I'll make the motion to approve the bills that are presented.
Thank you.
Second by Bernard Ice. Discussion?
Shouldn't we hold off on that coming?
I said, he said.
With exception of Conway, your motion should be.
Well, I said that before the motion got started, off the list.
Okay.
It's the same principle.
Okay.
All approve, say aye. Disapprove? Motion will carry. Next, Flagey Hospital Bond Issue Resolution, a few years ago fiscal court approved resolution in regards to improvements that Flagey was making and refinancing and along with several other hospitals around the country. That time it was under a different corporation name. Now, it's now known as Commons, see, Common Spirits, is that right? Common Spirits. What it is basically, it sounds like they're refinancing some monies that they've got outstanding bonds. Understand that these bonds are just like a corporation bond. They're tax free. All we're doing is approving the issuance of, the state of Kentucky actually does the incentive side of it. And we're just saying basically that this project is good for our community in Nelson County, that the hospital is important, the improvements they've made or continue to make are vital to our community. Basically that's the bottom line. Make any questions on?
Just to clarify, no financial obligations to the county or taxpayer?
No financial obligations to the taxpayer from Nelson County. Just like the industrial revenue bonds for the steel reason of it. And actually these bonds are tax free. They're sold either on the open market or placed on the open market. Motion to approve the resolution? Thank you. Jeff Lear, the second. Second by Eric. Further discussion? All approve, say aye. Disapprove? Motion will carry. By the way, I think remember it's been about, what she said, I gave you a copy of that about about four or five years, three years since we approved the original resolution that they never did follow through on it. Jeff, you were on the court at this time as well. Bernard and Keith at the court as well. Board appointments you have in your mail, some fiscal court orders appointing first, just do these individually. David Mattingly to the Development Review Board, David's been on the board a while and it's continued to struggle to find people on service on these boards, so David, we twisted his arm to hang around a little while.
How many people's on the board?
About five or six, five I think, five, there it is. Entertain a motion to reappoint David to that board, I appreciate it.
I'll make a mention.
Motion by Jeff, there's a second, the second by Gary. All approve, say aye. Disapprove? Motion will carry. Sign this one. Okay, next would be to the Board of Adjustments, Teresa Johnson to the Board of Adjustments. Teresa's in Burness District, served well. Entertain a motion to reappoint her to that position, Bernard?
I'll make the motion.
Motion's been made by Bernard Ice to reappoint Teresa Johnson to the Board of Adjustments, is there a second? Second by Keith Metcalf. All approve, say aye. Disapprove? Motion will carry. Next would be, this is a new appointment to the Nelson County Library Board Trustees, Robert Cecil. He's a banker. Yeah. Community minded person, I think he's doing an excellent job on the Library Board Trustees. Entertain a motion?
Approve Robert?
Motion's been made to approve Robert to the Library Board Trustees, is there a second? Second by Bernard Ice. Discussion? All approve, say aye. Disapprove?
Set it to new.
Yes, he's new to the. Lady resigned and found some new.
I like a lot of new blood.
New blood. Okay. Next on the list, media you have in your mail, I hope I put it in your mail. A list of World War I and World War, and Korean War casualties. We put this a few years, about two years ago, we did the World War II monument out on the side, east side of the courthouse. And this coming year, we want to, I want to plan on doing the other monument that we talked about about that same time. If you will help me put this in the newspaper and your media string there. Jim, I appreciate that. Because we actually found one or two last time we put it out to the public that was not on the state list. So it's helpful for community to know, these are the names that are on the, I've researched this through the state website and some other avenues. And if there's anybody else that we're missing, we'd like to have their names. Just bring them to the county judge's office. And actually, we found one. The last one named on that Korean War list was not on the list that the state had already, John Richard Newton. The family brought that in after discussions from the last time that we were planning on doing it. So there could be some others out there, seem to go here guys. I don't know, I don't know, it's probably some kind of my wife's family, I'd say. There was rapiers out on Roberts Road too. But anyway, be curious to see, that was World War I. Just for informational purposes, World War I casualties were, while one was too many, it was much less in World War II obviously. But the United States got into World War I late. And most of the casualties during World War I, when you research it, were from disease. Over half of them were from diseases, you know. There was no medication for infections and so forth and so on, and so the casualties were not all just wounds. There were diseases and so forth. Pretty interesting to research that. And that will be, that project will be in this year's budget when I present to you guys next couple of weeks.
Are you going to get pictures of what it's going to look like?
Yes, pretty good, yeah. Yeah, I'm actually working on that, we speak, there's a spot over here on the east side where we moved a bench and it'd be a perfect spot. And we've got the Vietnam group party there.
I just looked at the World War II when I came up here and it looks like it's in excellent shape. I don't know what company we used.
Oh, it was Pat's Valley.
That's about three years ago?
Two, two and a half.
That it's held up with?
The weather don't, the east side's not as, the northwest side for some reason. Roadside cleanup, starting April the 8th. You can call the office, any of the nonprofit groups that want to pick up the roadside. Lee, we need to get a, John, we need to get a dumpster at the road department. Our bags are coming up here shortly. You can sign up for that. Highways are filthy, dirty. This is a, you know, we do this every year, twice a year, and it seems like you just go backwards every year.
Judge, what do, what do the groups earn, how much?
A hundred dollars, I'm glad you asked, a hundred dollars a mile. And pick up both sides of the highway for that hundred dollars. I might, I have a few highways that are extra dirty, that might get a little bit more. I mean, there's some really, really bad spots in the county that we may have to, not, I won't use the word bribe in the public sector here, but entice, entice.
Is it just limited to county roads Judge, or is it?
State, state roads mostly, but we do some county roads too. And the groups usually identify something they want to do because it's their neighborhoods or, and it works pretty good. For a while.
For a week. Week or two.
A bit of a road last week, like soon the inmates cleaned it up, he did a real good job. Who's the master of the landfill?
Those inmates out of the state transportation cabinet's grant helps out a lot. They're from Lurue County Detention Center, but they're state contracts.
They had their work cut out for them.
They did good on the road.
Forty-nine of them both have.
Judge, how many groups are you looking for, you've got several signed up though.
I haven't signed up any yet this spring. Carol's out front's a new assistant I have at, we're going to break her in right here soon.
How many are you looking for?
Generally, generally we'll, I can tell you how much we'll spend, because each, some groups, like we got a couple of groups that do it every year and then we assign them a few more miles based on their past experience. We'll spend probably fifteen, eighteen to twenty thousand dollars per spring, per fall. It depends on the number of groups that sign up. That money comes from the tax on the, at the landfill that's generated, that's sent to Franklin, then turned around and reship back out here in the form of grants. Usually we get about fifty grand a year or so.
I think it's a fee, not a tax.
It's a tax, it's called a, what's that big word they use? Yeah, whatever. That's too many Rs together, that's too many Rs together for me.
How that happened years ago, the gentleman said he was trying to pay some bottle of meal, all the lobbyists, that was a compromise. Not a good one, but it worked.
Anyway, the local community's paying you, just getting some of your money back.
Can I say something about that? I would like for everybody in Nelson County to maybe just go out and clean up just in front of your yard. If you just do that, I would like to set a date every year if we could. I mean Nelson County's, it's pretty rough, I've sent several pictures to the judge. You know, our big malls.
Our private properties too.
And if everybody would just go out and when they see them picking up, just pick it up in front of your house. That would be a big, big plus to Nelson County. We need to clean Nelson County.
Yes, I think you can call in, give five hundred dollars on those. In the career, I remember there was a sheriff down in Burke County, they called them littering, they paid five hundred dollars, made headlines, that might help.
I understand, but you actually have to see them throwing an accident. Can't just see a vehicle, you got to see the body.
Well, when they were picking them on Bedlam Road, Deputy told me, he was out to consult guy, threw a bunch of stuff out one day while they were actually picking up. He had a friend, a state trooper, and the state trooper ran down the road, they got a five hundred dollar ticket.
My daddy would have whooped my butt for three weeks if I threw something out there.
Landfill solid waste report.
Bullshit, I'll pick up, get finished up with the second phase, you can start the third phase hopefully tomorrow. Numbers are catching up to last year, so cubic yards around twenty-eight hundred tons, six hundred and seventy, fifty-six hundred tires, a total cost of twenty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven so far. Tires are up a little bit, that's a good thing this year since we're doing tire amnesty, we're just hot off for, for free. Other than that, just normal operations.
When is that tire amnesty?
May ninth, tenth of August. It's a Thursday, Friday, and we're worked about noon on Saturday.
I'd just like to get it out there again, I've had several phone calls.
It's a good way to get rid of your tires, bring them in for free.
At the fairground.
At the fairground.
It's not Derby Week, is it?
Is Derby the week before that? It'd be the Saturday before that.
Saturday before that. It's been a hot month following weather.
May ninth, tenth of August.
Oh yeah, it's a weekend on Derby.
It's a week after Derby, yeah.
EMS report. Jail report, that's your number here.
So today we've got a hundred and fifty-two inmates, one federal inmate, fifty state, a hundred and one county, forty-eight county court, fifty-four district court. Males, a hundred and thirty, females, a hundred and twenty-two. Russell started yesterday taking the inmates out, picking up the garbage on some of the rubber stuff.
Good deal.
Good deal. Bryce went through the class too.
Yeah, he's going to, we got one ready for him, whenever you're ready to take him.
Took a lot of nerve there, Bryce.
You're doing up your nerve, but.
I'm ready now, I'm ready to go. He's pretty fat, he's huge.
On the jail, I know you guys, it's been several months, but we approved that temporary generator. They are doing that work as we speak. Hope the weather ends up, hopefully by the end of this week, our new generator. And that, that's one less problem. But.
Fix the sewer line.
Yeah, redoing awesome job.
Yeah, we had a sewer line issue that we addressed while we was at it, because the sewer line ran under the old generator that was there. So while we have the old generator out of the way, we went on to fix the sewer line while we're at it. So hopefully everything go well in the fourth meeting until you guys will wrap that.
We got the new show, we have them operating.
So the sewer line, how many feet did they end up having to replace in there, I seen that in the field.
Only about twenty to twenty-five. We have some issues with this. Replace it with a six inch.
The old generator Brad, is it, is it not functioning at all?
So it needs a new water pump, problem is the generator is so old, we're having issues finding a water pump for it, the bearings are out. What we're going to do is bring it over to the road department, try to cross-reference some water pumps on it and try to get it as a backup for whatever other location you guys may.
Do you need your oil maintenance shop, does it have a backup generator on it?
No.
That'd probably be helpful.
We have a generator to run the pumps, the time we went through the ice storm. We wired it in a way that we can let's get gasoline and diesel. Maybe, we'll see, I don't know, you know.
Just an idea.
It's a little different animal to make sure the jail has power at all times. And that's the reason we went on with this particular project, to ensure that.
That's probably one twenty-two a weight over there, isn't it, at the jail?
It may be more than that.
It might be two forty.
Yeah. Now you're starting to talk over my head there. I'll let you all know next court meeting how this project.
Well, I think what it's losing is, can you get some more life out of that old generator?
We can. I'm not willing to commit to that yet. You would think there's got to be.
Here's what happens to that, that philosophy though. You do it and you get used to it, having that generator there, then it goes really hay bad and you don't want it running anymore, then you turn around and have to buy another to replace that. Because you get used to it, like taking candy away from a baby. I've been there too many times. Landfill was a prime example of that, nineteen ninety-four, ninety-five, we had those, had those big army, had army trucks or two out there. Remember that, Lee? And you couldn't get parts for it, always sound great, we got this free truck. And then you couldn't get parts, then all of a sudden you got dependent on hauling that dirt and then you had to take another truck off the road and haul it.
Yeah, I know how it is, so when, if you haven't extended out at your tactical operations center, needs to have some kind of backup power, I would think. I mean, they did, they finally did it out of Harstown, that was really helpful, you know.
We got a generator, we got enough power that we can get the gas pumps running, all you really, 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 really need.
I weed into that slope.
We've been through it several times, it's worked fine, what we've done.
You don't want to spend five thousand dollars on a thousand dollar generator, neither do I.
Exactly, so I'm uncommitted at this point.
Joe's having to go typical government bureaucrat. I'm in that category. Recreation report.
I do know soccer's in season, I'd say their side of the park's filling up more and more each weekend. Baseball opening day is April fifteenth, so that's basically where I've been spending a lot of the time trying to get the kids ready over there. And other than that, basic park operations.
Running going on out there currently?
Yep, wouldn't bad currently.
Wouldn't bad for the high school teams. Hart County won that game yesterday, I got to throw the first pitch out.
Yep, it did, I think it's.
Did you get it across the plate?
Got it across the plate. That was sixty feet versus the Lily, what's Lily?
Forty-six.
Forty-six feet, that's a little bit different.
It's a little different.
It only bounced three times. That's all that matters.
That's all that matters.
Okay, road department report.
Basically, we should be finishing up phase two, hopefully today, the bulk yard will pick up. Starting phase three tomorrow, if everything goes well. Let's forebehead with that. About all I have is, that's for the road department report. Do you have anything?
Brad, give us an update maybe on the amphitheater project?
I would say we are eighty-five to ninety percent complete. The goal, the deadline is April thirtieth. And I think they'll meet that, they're, they're into what they call, you guys would know it if you're looking at the buildings, the one to the right. They're over there wiring now, they are ninety-five percent complete with the building to the left. So now that you got to dry it in, it's a little easier, right? They got some metal and stuff to do, but I think we're going to be right at that April thirtieth deadline for BCD. They have come to the table and they, they've done good, you know, weather's helped. There's a lot of stuff after BCD, even when BCD's in there, that's going on at a county level, at a city level, at a drama association level, additional work that had to be done above and beyond what BCD's contract is. I think it's all going to work out, it'd be really cool to see how this works, hopefully, when the season starts. So it'll come together, the community's done really well in supporting us, so that helped.
We do anticipate, Bethel News has their graduation there, we do anticipate that to be more than adequate.
We got to get our CO, and that's the big thing with the state. The Bethel's thing, we can have that, their graduation with some of the stuff not necessarily being done because they don't need everything, but you got to get that CO from the state. So that's key to that. So we think everything's on schedule, you know, you just never know, contracts sometimes. Plan is, what's on schedule?
Just keep an eye on, you know, they're under a deadline, just be sure.
Oh, hundred percent. You know, and I, you know, once we get the CO, we can still have a bullet point list of little stuff they got to deal with, what I'll call cosmetic stuff. And I welcome anybody to go down there, if you see anything, I know, keep pointing out the stuff to me, it helps out, have a different set of eyes on it. You just miss stuff, I mean, it's hard, a lot of things going on down there.
Yep, there's a lot of lit.
Are you on target with your donations with that?
Bus Rangers, the donations have, we're just about on target. We can always use just a little bit more. Because, and I say that because there are things that we didn't include that need to be done. In particular up the top of the stairs, that, the concessions area and the office area has some leaks and some wooden rotten places, we're getting, we're dealing with that right now. And that would really, we've actually put out bids for painting and some repairs. And hopefully, we'll have enough continued donations to be able to make those this year.
You know, the big thing is, it's like any house when you finally get done with it, or any project like landscaping. But that can make it look back like it should. And there's going to have to be some what they call screening, because you just can't grow a tree overnight. So there's going to be some screening that's got to be put up temporarily so you don't see, I mean, it's wide open down there compared to what it used to be. So it'll be a little different. But that's where Dean was talking about, the additional funds helps.
Yeah, we're, we're continuing to be a little over probably about one point one million in total fundraiser. Some, of course, some of those are pledges over, over a period of four or five years. But cash flow, it looks good so far.
I said something to the mayor, like going back there, all those limbs and things. He acted like they were going to bring their chipper down there and chip all that up and make that look a lot more presentable.
Yeah, and what I'm trying to do is, I want everybody to bail away and then clean it all up. The same way with the landscaping, we need to get BCD's folks out of the way and, because what I don't want to do is pull that favor with the city and then bring them back again and again. Kind of like, once you get them there, you want them to be one trip and out. There's some trees up there, I know Judge Watts is indicating if we need some TLC on it.
The tickets are, current tickets are on sale for season tickets, for, you saw the lineup in the paper the other day, if you guys haven't had a chance to get your season tickets. It's well worth the money to go.
I went down to purchase them.
Did you do it?
Yeah, so you're ready to manage it.
Like, I don't go, I go to most of the shows, but if I don't go, I make sure that somebody fills that seat. You know, just to have a good crowd here, I think it's important for the community.
I'll just use your seat too.
You know, Eric, it just so happens that every show this year that they've got, I like.
Just my luck.
They've got a nice lineup, I don't know if you've seen it.
I have a quick question. On the Fredericksburg Bridge, the barriers that we got the email, and you went out and looked at them.
Our barriers are up.
They're up, yes. On the sign, I read that sign on the email, says not responsible for injuries while on the bridge.
That's Washington County's sign.
What is, I haven't had a chance to get down, what's on our side?
Road closed.
Okay, we need to put a no trespassing sign up there. Because just like the children that played, federal came in and said, you can't put that kind of sign up, children that play. Because it insinuates the children can play in the road. So same type way with the bridge, if you put a bridge sign up that says not responsible for injuries on the bridge, that's saying it's okay to go on the bridge.
Washington County's got that.
I know, but we need one on our side.
I don't mind putting up the no trespassing.
Yeah, I think that'd be a wise thing.
You know, we get a lot of complaints, you guys know where the bridge is, about people ordering out there. That's going to be hard to stop, guys, because there ain't no stopping. But let me just say this, I'm going to open my big mouth, I probably shouldn't do this, but I'm going to do it anyway. You know, we've been, we've been dealing with this bridge off and on for the last ten, fifteen years, in particular the last five years. And it's come a time, and I've, I've talked to Gary about this already and Brad, about, and Lee, I think I copied you on that. It's come a time that we're going to take that bridge out. Hopefully the next couple of years, take it out professionally and do it the right way. There's no salvage into it, we thought initially it could be kept for a walking bridge, but the flooring in it is dangerous and we're not going to spend any more money on it that way. So somewhere along the line, we're going to analyze the true cost of it and, and take it out and do it the right way. I hate to take out those old bridges, but it was far gone when we got here. It was. It just hasn't been maintained for a long time, to today's standards anyway. But it is a public safety issue and public safety comes number one, that's why we closed it, and we do plan on taking it out.
State bridge is closed.
I understand that.
Question, why do we own all the bridge? It seems like to me.
It was assigned to us by, by the state of Kentucky.
Why, because we was a bigger county?
I have no idea.
It just don't seem fair to me.
Well, we just give it back to them.
We'll take responsibility.
I understand that, but, I mean, if you look at it, I mean, if it's half there, the water line's half there, it's half over.
I want to ask them some state assistance on it, so, so it's all ours.
Okay, well that's better.
That's a reason we get to it.
But I don't think there's a person here would disagree that it does, it needs to be taken out.
That's a different animal.
And you were against criticism, I'm sure you're.
I'm sure there'll be additional water, Army Corps of Engineers departments.
The bridge painted?
Yeah.
Dude, it was painted a long time.
You're going to watch it, you can't let it hit the water.
We'll just leave it at that.
It doesn't matter what it costs, one life is not worth. It does matter, but.
You see where that little girl got pushed off that bridge? That could easily.
I'd be saying, I wish I'd done it.
You're right.
You got three and a half years to do it.
Three and a half years? What does that judge?
Moving on.
I thought you got a contract like Cal Terry. It's a long time.
Okay, not on your agenda.
We didn't get no paperwork with this.
This is not, this is just for informational purposes. There is a group in Nelson County called United for Recovery. It's an organization that helps families that have, usually have children or grandchildren that are on drugs of some sort. And United for Recovery is hosting a NARCAN training session at the Civic Center on April the twenty-third at six o'clock. Public's invited to be trained on it, we, there's a grant available, I'm going to have some applications here. As an individual, if you want to be trained on it, you fill this out and submit it to the United for Recovery or get it back to me and I'll make sure they get it. That you can take the training, it does, what I understand takes less than a half an hour to have folks trained on it, so they're hosting that at the Civic Center, I think it's a good public service. The medication is going to be free through a grant through one of the local pharmacies. I'll have these up here for you to pick up anytime you want to. Media, I think she's going to get with you, Tammy Gibson, she's going to get with you guys on that. They have this little pin on today, see this little pin, the little, do you see the blue pinwheels out front? On the lawn, those represent the, April is the month, Child Abuse Awareness Month. If you will look at, just assembled, symbolic purposes, keep that in mind and pass the word on that. I got this from the community action last weekend meeting. Told them I would mention that to the court. Anybody else have anything to present?